Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all of those who have passed away in our community, especially Chief Richard Pika, former superintendent of the Scranton Fire Department.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahan?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
I would like to make a motion to take from the table Resolution Numbers 30, 31, and 32, 2018.
Second. On the question, these resolutions pertain to the traffic signal approval at two areas for the proposed Sheets project as well as the contract with Peters Design for the Sorenti Center improvements. These resolutions will be placed in Seventh Order for a final vote. Anyone who wishes to speak on any of these items may do so during citizens' participation. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order 3A, Controllers' Report for the month ending March 31, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3B, Lackawanna County Planning Commission Ordinance Amendment Evaluation Report Received, April 16, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3C, Tax Assessors Report, For Hearing Date To Be Held, May 2, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3D, Minutes Of The Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission Meeting Held March 21, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3E, Minutes Of The Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting Held March 21, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3F, Minutes Of The Scranton Police Pension Commission Meeting Held March 21, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3G, Minutes Of The Composite Pension Board Meeting Held March 21, 2018.
Are there any comments?
Yes, I have one comment. We've been talking the last three weeks about the recent composite pension board meeting and the decision by the composite pension board to divvy up the proceeds from the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority. I just want to read a letter into the record that I sent to Jerry Cross of the Pennsylvania Economy League, April 19th. "I am writing to you because of my concern over a recent vote taken by the Scranton Composite Pension Board. On Wednesday, April 4, 2018, the composite pension board voted to evenly split 90 percent of the $22.9 million in sewer sale proceeds between the fire and police pension funds, with the remaining 10 percent allocated towards the non-uniform fund. With an even split of 45 percent of the sewer sale proceeds designated to each fire and police fund, the funding for the fire pension fund will remain severely financially distressed at 38.2 percent. My concern is the long-term viability of the pension funds was not taken into full consideration by the board. As our Act 47 Recovery Coordinator, I would like to know your opinion on this matter. Do you believe that the vote taken by the composite pension board to evenly split the sewer proceeds between fire and police funds was a financially sound one for the city of Scranton and its taxpayers? Were you consulted on this matter by the city and did you have an opportunity to provide them your opinion on how the proceeds should be calculated? I would appreciate a response as soon as possible." I did ask the city administration regarding this meeting that took place by the composite pension board meeting, why the city abstained from the vote. I did receive an email reply from Danielle Kennedy, who is the city's Human Resources Director, and she is the proxy for Mayor Courtright on the composite pension board, and she said the following. "The city came prepared to table the vote, as it is the responsibility of the board to look at the soundness of each fund that comprises the composite fund itself. We needed additional time to review various allocation percentages and, as such, abstained from the vote because if it came up for reconsideration pursuant to Roberts Rules, we would be able to introduce a motion to change the allocation." So I appreciate the response from the administration. As I look through the minutes from the composite pension board, I'm troubled because it does seem that the vote was rushed, and the pension board had not taken into consideration the additional analysis that was done, that was requested and paid for by the city of Scranton. So I don't know what the rush was, but I don't think at this point it was a good idea. I think they should have taken more time and investigated that additional analysis that was done. Thank you.
Anyone else? Received and filed.
3H, Minutes Of The Composite Pension Board Special Meeting Held April 4, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3I, Agenda For The Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting Held April 18, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3J, Agenda For The City Planning Commission Meeting To Be Held April 25, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I have one announcement. The National Prescription Drug Take Back Day will be held Saturday, this Saturday coming up to 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It provides an opportunity for Americans to prevent drug addiction and overdose deaths. The day aims to provide safe, convenient, and responsible means of disposing of prescription drugs while also educating the public about the potential for abuse of medications. Since the Drug Enforcement Administration first launched the Take Back Day in 2010, more than 9 million pounds of medicine have been collected from the public. This is very close to my heart, as many of you have been affected by opioids in the city, county, state, and in this whole country of ours. It's important and it's real. The dangers are severe, and any time we can get opioids out of the hands of people who don't absolutely need them, the fastest, the better. There's no, I've seen it happen to family close at hand to me firsthand, and it's awful. So please participate in this if this applies to you. The drop-off center this year is going to be at the police headquarters at 100 South Washington Avenue, and again, the times are 2:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Fourth Order, Citizens' Participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hodorwannitz.
Joan Hodorwannitz, Scranton resident, taxpayer. Any update on the Arcatus study?
I talked to one of the principals today, and they're waiting on getting some of the impervious sites digitized as far as where they all are in the city, and that's basically the holdup right now.
Okay.
So.
Do we have any kind of timeline about when we might see some product?
We should have some sort of draft prior to that, but it's not going to be complete until they have that information, so I have to talk to Don King tomorrow and see where that process is.
Okay.
And I'll let you know next week.
And any movement on the issue of reassessment?
I expect an announcement on that relatively soon.
Good. The other thing that I've got is I went through the March Controllers' Report, and I found an interesting item. As you recall, March 30, 2017, you passed a resolution awarding an insurance contract to Knoll's Associates. It was for a one-year period with an option for a two-year extension, so it would run through 2017 through 2020. And I'll read from the BA's memo. "The total premium for the renewal of C Scranton policies is $701,116, which represents an approximate savings of $148,000 compared to the most recent assigned total premium." Now, I recall that a year ago, in one of the controllers' reports, there was an invoice for $701,116,000. But in this March report, under Human Resources, Liability/Casualty Insurance, there's Knoll's Associates, but the invoice was for $775,517. And my question is, is this the premium for the coming year? And if so, why did it jump $74,000 or 10.6%? If I recall, we don't yet own the Sorenti Building, and we're not paying that insurance, correct?
Yeah.
I remember I asked that question, and I was told, no, we're not paying that. And even though they moved equipment up there, it was equipment that we really already owned, so it shouldn't make a difference where it is. I mean, not that much. The only other thing, major event that happened was the Pocket Park on the corner of Wyoming in Linden. So you might want to check, you know, what triggered this 10.6% increase in insurance premium, if that's in fact what it was, but I don't know what else we were paying Knoll's Associates for. And is that going to be the premium for the third year? Yeah, that's a bit more money than you were told last year in the resolution. And I saw the article in this morning's paper about the efforts to repair the treehouse at Naug Park. I hope we can be done, because we spent so many tax dollars doing it in the first place to have it sitting up there as a sore thumb, I think is, we're coming into the warm weather, praise be to God, you know, finally we've got some warm weather. But it looks like we may not even get any use out of it this calendar year, so hopefully they can get the grants moving and get some repairs done as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Wes Spindler?
Good evening, Council. Wes Spindler, City Resident, homeowner, taxpayer. A number of weeks ago, a young lady was here talking about that march for gun control, and she spoke, and she asked council to send a letter. And a day or two later in the paper, it said, "Councilman Donahue spoke to Councilman Gawn about putting a letter together." Did council send a letter to the congressmen or senators?
As a group, we have not.
Did anybody send a letter? I'll take that as a no.
We're currently working through that. It should go out in the next week.
Okay, I thought it should have been done by now. Okay, I want to read an article in the paper from about two weeks ago. "Police Shoot/Kill Attacking Dog." It's from Carbondale. "City Police Shot &amp; Killed A Pit Bull Monday After Dog Attacked Another Dog And Charged Group Of Children," Mayor Justin Taylor said. "Responding To Reported Dog Attack Near 170 Park Street About 4:00 p.m., Found A Pit Bull Viciously Attacking A Doberman Pinscher," Taylor said. Noting he believed the Doberman was on a chain. "Police Fired Several Beanbags At The Attacking Dog Before Shooting It With A Stung Gun Several Times, At Which Point The Dog Ran Away," Taylor said. "Blocks Away At 7th Avenue And Park Street, Police Found A Pit Bull Charging At A Group Of Children. 'When The Officers Got Out Of The Car, They Didn't Have Any Other Option,' Taylor said, noting they shot and killed the dog as a last resort. 'The Pit Bull, Which Was Someone's Pet, Had Been Involved In Other Incidents,' Taylor said. 'The Status Of The Doberman, Which Suffered Extensive Trauma Through The Back, Shoulders, Legs, And Face Was Not Immediately Known.' Taylor Did Not Know If The Dog Injured Any People.'" And on that note, I'm going to say, Councilman Perry, I'll make you a deal. If you could bring me proof that a pit bull isn't the most dangerous breed around, I'll never mention pit bulls again.
You know, I'm not, I'm not a dog expert. I don't know.
They are.
I don't know. I mean, they make headlines all the time, but, you know, so do other dogs. Now, there is some legislation in Sixth Order that has aggressive and dangerous dogs legislation in there.
I saw that, but that doesn't go far enough.
But as far as singling out one, I'm just, I'm just not there.
Well, well, they are banned in Prince George's, Prince George's County, Maryland. So they're breed-specific there. And years ago, Dobermans used to be considered a vicious group, and this pit bull tore an Doberman apart. Something's got to be done. And I was glad to see on that quality life ordinance that dangerous dogs are in there, but as I said, that doesn't take it far enough. If a dog is deemed dangerous, you should do what they did in Pittsburgh. People have to put a 10-foot fence up and have special insurance on that dog. Then maybe we won't have problems like this. But I'm sure you people won't do anything, because you don't do anything. Okay, on a good note, this article in the paper the other day about a business coming into town, hiring 200 people, they're going to make detergent, fabric softener. I think that's great news. We haven't had a business come into the city hiring 200 people in how long. And I think that's a sign that people are starting to believe in this city, that it's starting to come back. It's been a long time, it was torn down for the previous administration for 12 years, and I think this is proof that people have confidence in this city, or else this business wouldn't have bought a building in the city and hired 200 people. I think that's a great sign the city is coming back. How about the dog licenses? How can it be $5 from the county and $30 from the city?
The county doesn't contribute to Griffin Pond, we do. I'm not justifying the amount, I think it's way too high, but...
But if someone buys a $5 license from the county, that's okay in the city?
The county does not contribute to Griffin Pond Shelter, we do.
But is that a legal license?
Probably for outside the city, yeah. I'm not agreeing that the $30 fee is not outrageous, it certainly is, but I'm just...
But if someone that's great buys a $5 license from the county, is that legal in the city?
I don't think you can buy a $5 license in the city from the county, I think you have to buy it from the city. That license is for outside the city.
Doesn't make any sense to me.
No, you're probably right, there probably should be one license from the county. I agree with that.
Lastly, have the garbage bill been mailed out yet?
This week.
This week. Do you know if the date is going to be pushed back?
Yes, to May 31st.
Yes, we're getting legislation next week. In response to our inquiries to the administration last week, their response was to send legislation, so that's going to be on the agenda for next week to extend it to May 31st.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Elman?
I'd like to read a little bit of this so I don't forget everything. In the paper, the week before last, I believe, was a little article stating that DND of Wilkes-Barre was in negotiations with our city on some new lease, I believe it said a halfway house for women. DND, last year, owed $26,000 on three properties and back taxes. I was just wondering if they own this property in question, are the taxes paid? And if they lease it, do they have authority to sublease it to the city? The same article said they have spent $15 million on downtown. I'd like someone to tell me where. I can't find knowledgeable people that know about it. I just don't believe people should do business with people you can't trust. Somebody that owes back taxes can't be trusted to me, as far as renting or leasing something I was told last Sunday at an auction, DND doesn't have the best name in Wilkes-Barre where they're from, but that was just say-so. I guess I could go out with my usual attack or counsel and the mayor and all. You, yeah.
Are you going, go ahead.
I know. I was, I was just wondering why our assistant mayor, Amosel, even came back here, except to separate the taxpayers from some more money and maybe get out of the gravy train again with his law firm. They must be waiting in the wings to see what you're going to do with the reassessment absurdity. I don't know if you were interested, Mr. McGovern wrote a very, very nice article about it, against it, so you probably don't want to discuss it.
I'm going to discuss it in the motions.
Has anybody ever verified that his law firm can legally practice in this state? I was told like a year ago, there was, I don't know if you people know it, there was five companies here to bid on the sewer authority. When all this really was beginning, one of, one of these gentlemen told somebody that I know, they shouldn't be involved because they're not licensed in Pennsylvania, but they could probably skirt it like everything else on this deal was, but this is all say-so, like Perry Mason says. Now, for 25 years, I've walked four different dogs down to the Lackawanna River occasionally, and I don't know what you call this thing, just off of Parker Streets, a big rubber hose coming out, and there's a sign that says sewage. It's been pouring out of there. I'm talking about lots and lots of sewage comes out all the time. But in February, it was absolute worst I ever seen for some reason. This is going into the Lackawanna River, and we're being charged to clean up the Chesapeake What is wrong, there's just something wrong with the sewer authority to allow this, if you ask me. And this is a fact, all you got to do is go down there and look, it's just, it's just a nasty situation. Let me say one other thing, and I'll sit down and shut up.
Quickly, please.
There's a gentleman on Troop Street dumped a dozen loads of trash down there. He picked up part of it, the city made him pick up part of it, the rest of it's still there, but some of his garbage that he dumped on the riverside, right where the river is, it washed away the last couple of weeks when the water got so high. This is, this is against what we're paying for. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Evening, Council. Bob Bowles, Scranton. First off, I'd like to say that on Saturday, there's a benefit from 5:00 to 8:00 at St. Mary's Center for Tony DiBilio. He's a very close friend of mine, as we all know, he was shot by some idiot when he was sitting in a bar. So I'd just like to put that out there, that he needs the support, the whole community to help him with the bills and expenses that he's going through in the rehab. So that's this Saturday at 5:00 to 8:00 at St. Mary's. Now, on the agenda, on 7A, I think you have a major issue with this, and I'm going to tell you what it is. Mr. Hinton decided that sea containers, or pods, or anything of that nature are considered structures. We went to court. Judge Gibbons ruled, based on what Mr. Hinton's pointing out there, that these are considered structures. We've appealed that decision. You cannot enact anything regarding structures, since he put it in there right now, while this litigation is pending. It could be modified to take out structures, or be more specific, that sea containers, or pods, or storage containers of any sort that are dropped in here are not considered structures. Nobody lives in them, they're not sanitary, and all the other nonsense he raised. So Judge Gibbons erred drastically in his decision in calling these sea containers structures. I've been in the business a long time, and I've never seen anything that said a container ship, quote, "structure ship sunk out in the ocean." Okay, so it was one of the most idiotic decisions I've ever seen done in a court of law, especially being in the commercial businesses we are, and dealing with containers every single day off the sea ports, that we haul hundreds of containers every single year, probably in the thousands, and have never been called a structure. So you have to be fully aware of that. If you enact that tonight, we're going to have to challenge it, or you're going to have to wait until the court litigation is over with before you can put that in, because based on the court reading, a sea container is a structure and so is a pod. And they're all over the city. You're going to go to CVS on Moose Creek Street and tell them they got to move their containers, you're going to get down to the flats here and tell them move their containers, you're going to go over to the mattress firm down in the flats and tell them move their containers. You see what I'm getting at? Because they're considered structures. You cannot enact this tonight until you get better clarification. I just want to put that out to you tonight. And there is litigation pending, so that's going to stay this anyway, one way or the You know, by the time this goes through all the courts, it's going to be a long, long time, because I'm not going to sit back and follow something that is idiotic as this, calling a sea container a structure, that you're going to live in or it's not sanitary. I don't know anybody living in any of them around the city or anywhere on the ocean. So that's that part. The other part is, I want to get back to some serious business here, that when I was here several weeks ago, Mr. Gahan, I brought up about Mulligan. I asked whether or not you or anybody else is going to pursue the money he's owed us. It was illegal that he took the money, it was black and white, and yet the city's sitting back doing nothing about it. You cannot get paid as an employee and get insurance if you're not an employee. And it's very clear, I've already presented it to the Attorney General, and one question I had, why hasn't City Council done something? So I brought that up to you to do, since you want to get rid of transparency and all the other nonsense. The other part was on the marketplace. I never heard any response from you from the time I asked you what was going on there when you talked about a letter. I got the answers, but you didn't give me an answer as to what was going on. And what upsets me, you pointed out, oh, I sat in a jail and I did this and I did that, put a halo around your head. Well, General Flynn and others in our government resigned, were fired, because they did the capital sin, and that's lie. One thing I don't do is lie. One thing I won't tolerate is a lie, whether it's you or anybody else, employee or otherwise. Truthfulness is what makes this country go around, and when you lie about something, you pay the consequences. I asked for your resignation back then, and I'm still asking for your resignation now. You lied to me about a letter being sent, it's on the record. And you should man up to your responsibilities, and in all honesty, you need to resign, because you've lost your issue of credibility, and it's not transparency. Your mom may have taught you about skunks, the first thing she should have taught you about is not to lie. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. John Foley?
I had not intended to speak on the pension plan, but since the topic was brought up, I'll offer my observations. The issue is not the allocation among the plans. My observation is, it's rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic. Because frankly, what brought the pension plan to its condition was the city's underfunding of the pension plan, and the only way the city is going to be able to budget, balance budget for the next couple of years is not putting any money in. So it's only a matter of time for the city's pension plan to tank again. So I wouldn't worry about the allocation, I would worry about where's the money coming from each year to fund the pension plan, but it is not in the budgets. Now, with that said, I apologize, I spend the winter in Florida, but I do read the Scranton Times while I'm there, and one of the articles that caught my attention was a comment attributed to Mr. And one of the articles that caught my attention was a comment attributed to Mr. Rogan, that the lawsuits against the city were politically motivated. Not the case. Not the case at all. The lawsuits are really as a result of, and I am very familiar with a number of lawsuits, that people, taxpayers, property owners, contractors, lawyers are reacting to the city not being responsive. And the city has not moved to correct any of that. And as a consequence, I believe, there will be more lawsuits. So if there's more lawsuits, then it can't be politically motivated. My involvement started with the offices of licensing, and I'm not satisfied with the I heard a comment that Mr. Rogan and the mayor said, that they did not want to waste any more money on appealing the decision, the three-panel judge in Harrisburg, which I have friends who've told me that they were astounded. But hey, that happens.
Which case is that, Mr. Foley?
Oh, that's where the bed and breakfast.
I did not comment on the bed and breakfast cases.
The...
Because that's where I thought you were going with it?
It came back to me, if it's not attributed, that's fine. But I will tell you, it was not pursued by the city, so whether you made the comment or not, the city didn't pursue it. So I am still unhappy. This is not politically motivated. I'm not going to stop. Matter of fact, I am interested in other things. I have the time, being retired for years, and I'm embarking on a whole bunch of other projects. I made a promise to some women several months ago, that I would look at something, in fact I did. And my work is completed, and I have issued that work to others. Whether it goes anywhere, I can't tell you. But I will tell you, I think it was a good product. I have three other products, that I have asked lawyers to engage me, so that I can work on them, not because I want to run behind a lawyer. I do it because I don't want to be interrupted by anyone before I'm finished. My product, these products, will be made public, because I believe the taxpayers and the property owners are on a need-to-know basis. Now, with that said, I am asking that you look at the zoning regulations, the court decision in Harrisburg, disagree with, I think they overreached by telling the city what they had to do. I would like you to do something. I will not ask again. It is up to your decision to do it. The next time I come, I will ask you to embark on another project. With that said, I would like to tell you I was going home to cook for my wife tonight, but she's with her daughters in Philadelphia, so I have to cook for one. Gentlemen, have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. And before you leave, I just want to clarify my comment about politically motivated, it was certainly not directed to you, it was directed in a lawsuit that was involved with the mayoral candidate. And I haven't commented on the bed and breakfast issue at all, just so, just to clear that up.
That's fine. See, I don't take things personally. Other people take things personally. I just get to a business mode, and I'm in a business mode with all of this. It's not personal. Believe me, the things I'm doing now are not personal. I fully expect by the end of this year, possibly by the end of June, to be vilified in the city of Scranton. But what I used to do for a living, people vilified me all the time. So with that...
Thank you, Mr. Foley.
Have a great evening.
Dave Dobson?
Good evening, Dave Dobson, resident taxpayer. Once again, I'd like to challenge some of our activist legal authorities and people involved in lawsuits, why don't they sue for 35%? Sue the state that 35% tax-exempt, including government buildings, et cetera, and so on, and so forth, is excessive for the town of Scranton? Because if they overturn the 511 taxes, then it's just going to get stacked on to more property tax, and, you know, it gets a little discouraging. I have a frog in my throat, I apologize. 6C and 7A. I have never seen the ordinances in this town enacted fairly, or equitably, with people. Two or three neighbors decided they didn't like the house next door to my house. So now what do I have? Alexander Brunel. I have New York people, and they think they're gangsters, that we's bad, you know? Well, play with me too much, and you'll find out how bad you are. But that's besides the point. When Tina was bounced, she just walked away from the house, because of fines, fees, and this and that, and going on. Her parents died off, and she walked away. She didn't try to sell it, she just walked away. Enough of this already. I'm tired of people having all the ammunition with grudges and obsessive personalities, fixating on certain other neighbors in the neighborhood. It was announced here a couple of weeks ago that a house was falling down. Well, I mentioned off to the side that it probably wasn't falling down. Please stop by if you're going to announce it from that podium. And the next week, another one was mentioned, and yeah, you can see it if it's bad enough. But the point is that I'm really disturbed about people getting fixed on certain things. Now we have animals on it, and okay, if a dog's running around biting people, or other dogs, or whatever, that's an issue. But what about the guy that feeds the bird? Suppose the bird drops on your windshield or something? Is that a nuisance animal? Or street cats, is that a nuisance animal? So, and then we have old cars. Well, $5,500 was taken from an acquaintance's lawn, an acquaintance of mine. The next house, two years later, there was a '70s Camaro, sitting next door with shoots growing out of the windshield wiper area, the little grill there above the windshield wiper. So, you know, I think the time, it's really time in Scranton that we start getting introduced to objective thought, and unfortunately, being religious in nature, our universities don't teach objective thought. You have to think both ways. What are they complaining about, and what is the issue? And is it a real issue, or are we just making things worse for ourselves? Because I really resent what was done to that house next door. And the person that owns it and rents it out probably has a Section 8 in there, $8.50 a month, and we couldn't get a couple of dollars out of this lady, and she just moved out. But she was against insurmountable odds, but she could have at least sold it for a fair price or something. We're not doing anything, and unfortunately, people just get discouraged, and they do leave. If I have too much more trouble, maybe I'll rent my place out for $8.50 a month and get some queenie in there. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
John Mara, 414 Adams Avenue. And this evening, I am speaking on behalf of the Lackawanna River Conservation Association, hence forced to be referred to as the LRCA. We have a few events coming this weekend. First, on Friday evening, we will be holding a Cask for a Cause at Coopers. This is a benefit for the LRCA, and we have a special Ferkin, which is a 10-gallon cask of beer, which we will be tapping. Proceeds will benefit the LRCA. We'll be having some basket raffles and a 50/50 as well. And I'd like to thank Coopers for hosting this event, and point out that this is their 70th anniversary this week. They are celebrating by having some food specials. If you go online, they have some fantastic prices. And we'd like to invite council ladies, Attorney General Nora, and the community to come down and join us in this event. And we also have recently acquired a new piece of property on the river. Some of you folks might know the old bocce courts down at the end of Diamond Avenue. And we are doing a cleanup on Saturday morning, and we'd like to welcome anyone to come down and join us in our efforts. This is a beautiful piece of property, a beautiful stretch of the river, and it needs some serious cleaning up and love, and we're going to put our efforts into that. So we've been a little busy, pardon me for running late and such, this evening. We are moving into new facilities as well at the moment, so we've had a lot going on, and we always welcome the community to join us. Go to our Facebook page, please like and follow the LRCA. And I'll give you each an invitation to Coopers this Friday night, 27th, at 5:00 p.m. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Regarding 6A and B tonight, I still, while I don't think it would ever happen, I think that if the authority of our city and the assets that you are loaning out, are loaned out further to a third party, that it should not be up to the mayor alone to approve. I think it should be city council. And, but that's not the way your legislation is written, so I really think you should change that legislation to include city council. And, you know, the pensions came up tonight, and, you know, last week I was troubled, because you all have caucuses before the meeting, and I remember in the days when you used to discuss things back there, but last week, and I went away thinking, three separate people spoke about the pension distribution. And so when I went to the meeting on Wednesday, I assumed that you would have communicated with your proxy to implement something that you wanted, some action, but there was nothing.
I did.
You weren't at the meeting?
I did communicate to the proxy. The council president sits on the composite pension board.
Council is not sitting on the pension board.
Yeah, I understand. Lori is your proxy, yes, I understand that. But she was there, and I did not hear her speak up with respect to what it was that this council wanted. Did I?
Well, last week, three individual councilmen addressed the issue, and it was our personal beliefs, the council president discussed it with his proxy, but it's not my proxy or anybody else's, it's the council president's proxy.
Well, I would have thought, if three of you had discussed it in caucus, then you would have voted on it last week, and you would have come up with a position, and that would have been stated. So I just find that sort of weird, that you speak here one way, and then no action when the actual meeting occurred. So, okay, and then things, other things I don't understand. You know, there's been lots of agitation, and I've been a part of it, on the tax reassessment, the property tax reassessment. But you know, the one thing you people have had in every single plan to get us out of the hole and back healthy, has included going after the HUP test, doing the HUP test. And you ignore it. You've got that in your power. So I don't know how you can throw stones at, excuse me, at the county, when you have something that would probably gain the city a lot more than the property tax.
Well, as you know, I insisted on putting that into the recovery plan, so I'm very much in favor of it, but we don't have the ability to do it. Administration has to bring up that clause as well.
You could pass legislation directing him to do that. You have, you can come up with your own ordinances. He can veto it, but then we know where he stands. I don't know why that has not been done. Do you know what the current percentage is of properties, of the total assessment that are nonprofits?
Not the most current one, no.
Okay. I mean, I really think that needs to be done, and sooner rather than later. I would pursue that before I would pursue the reassessment any day of the week. Now, speaking of other things that I don't understand, we've been told that the property at the corner of Adams and Mulberry has mine voids. And it dawned on me when I pulled in there on Wednesday to park, that has this thing been inspected? Has the city inspected that property to see that that is a viable parking area?
I would hope so, since they have billing permits.
Well, I mean, I hope so too, but I would appreciate it if somebody would check. I mean, if there are voids under that building, I don't want my car down in a mine. And then I'd like to go back, do we know, you gave Scranton tomorrow a big chunk of change, and the Pocket Park at Wyoming and Linden was supposed to be, the cleanup was supposed to be given to us by money, by the county. When is something going to happen on that property?
That's in process. The mitigation is in, well, the testing is in process, I should say.
The testing was accomplished already, was it not?
Part of it was, but I don't think it's complete, so we're still waiting.
When will it, when is it scheduled to be complete?
Last time I talked to the county, I expected it would be the next 30 days.
Okay, 30 days from now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll follow up then, and I'll be back next week with more on pensions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Lee Morgan. Well, the first thing I have here is less talked about dangerous dogs here tonight. Pit bulls are very dangerous dogs. They usually break the front legs of the dogs that they're going to kill and choke them to death. So I mean, does that mean that every single one of them is dangerous? I don't know if that's true, but I do know that it's well past the time for this council to have done something about that. And the other thing I have here tonight is, reading, I believe it was yesterday's paper, the city was looking for an attorney, I would assume, to sue opiate firms, you know, pharmaceutical companies, in the future, and I guess they're hunting for an attorney to do that. But, you know, the thing that really gets me is, in a city that's not invested one penny in anything, basically, and has relied on grants, and any other form of revenue they can find, and still hasn't created a summer youth program for the children in the city over decades, I really think that a lot of the problem with opioids with young adults goes back to our government, because it showed a lack of desire to invest in the youth of the community. And it just goes to prove how dysfunctional... And it just goes to prove how dysfunctional our government really is. And let's not forget that we also had a drug court, put a lot of people in jail, but when they got out, they had no treatment. So I just think that the major problem we've experienced in our country is our government's incompetence. We listened to this council talk about reassessment. Somebody stopped me on Sunday and said that they're paying over $5,000 a year in taxes, they're going to leave. Everybody wants to get out of here, because this city hasn't learned one thing. It has to cut its budget. You know, people have come up here and spoke about comparably sized cities having half the budget the city of Scranton has. But yet and still, we can't get a council to do anything for the residents of this city, no matter what it is. Mr. Ballis talked about containers. You know, I'm really troubled, and I understand that Judge Gibbons handled this case. Whenever he handles a case, I find it almost comical, because I don't find him to be a competent judge. But yet, somebody voted him into office and put robes on him. God help us all. It's ridiculous. You know, it all goes back to the voters. It really does. They voted everybody into government that's there. And take a look at a city that over a quarter of a century hasn't figured out how to save itself, and sold every single one of its assets, and now it's looking for a way to save a treehouse up at Naug. It's ridiculous. It's just beyond ridiculous. You know, there's one fee piled on top of another fee, on top of another fee, on top of another fee, and people come in and ask their council a question and can't get an answer sideways on anything. "We're studying it, we're looking at it, I'll get back to you." And that's been going on for decades. You know, and then, "Well, Mr. Rogan, you decided we were going to save a little bit of money by not recording these meetings." And people come up and talk about the record. There is no record. There's nothing. But when it came time for the council themselves to put up something and give their wages back to the city, didn't happen, because then I guess we're all insulted now that we just can't contribute anything. And, you know, when you ask other people to contribute all the time, and you have people in the city abandoning their properties, you know, that'd be the study to have. How many properties in the city have been abandoned by their owners? That'd be the real study to have, to really take a look at what's going on in this city. Not the streets, not the lack of curbs, not any of the silliness. How many people have walked away from their properties? And Mr. Evans, you're a Realtor. You must know how desperately people are trying to get out of here. It's not a big secret. And it all goes back to this council and previous councils, so maybe you'll do something someday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Is there anyone else?
Can I hand this to you for them? Hi, my name is Alex Latorre. I live on 1430 Muncie Ave. I am also here today as the union organizer with the nurses at Moses Taylor and Regional Hospitals, and our healthcare professionals that work there. As you may have heard in The Times and the local news stations, Moses Taylor Nurses have been bargaining with, we know as Commonwealth Health, but nationally, they're companies called Community Health Systems. And you may remember, in the last 10 years, they've been purchasing up our community hospitals with bank loans that they get from, through investments and backed by investors. So they're tight for money. And we know that when they purchased our community hospitals, that used to have plenty staff to hold hands of patients when there's no family member to say, "I'll be right back" and mean it. Our nurses now are taking eight to 10 patient assignments in the med surg floors, where there's cardiac patients and oncology patients and orthopedic patients. And they're using our labor and delivery and mom, baby, and NICU nurses to staff those floors where they're exposed to contagious diseases like MRSA and the flu, and then called back often to deliver a baby. And so they're on their scrubs that they can't even take home because they have to be clean at the hospital. They're carrying contagious diseases that have been tracked back up to our fifth floor labor and delivery suites. Now, the public, we're trying to get that out to the public. What we're asking you to do is, on Wednesday, there is a strike. Moses Taylor Nurses voted 92% to call a strike after 16 bargaining sessions with CHS. They're asking for more nurses, more help. What we used, what used to be community hospitals should be treated that way in Northeast Pennsylvania and shouldn't be taken advantage of by this company from Tennessee. And I'd just like to highlight that there's not an industry that's been through Northeast Pennsylvania that hasn't taken advantage of us from the outside. So for like coal and textiles, we need to be in the gas industry now. We need to look out for our workers and make sure that they're not taken advantage of. So I'm asking the city council to join us at noon at the picket line in front of the ER on Quincy Avenue. There'll be a rally with the nurses. There'll be time for elected officials to speak and make a comment. We're asking you to call on CHS or Commonwealth Health to negotiate a fair contract for these nurses that includes staffing in the contract. So we're asking them to limit the use of floating the labor and delivery nurses and hire more med surg nurses is one of our big issues. But we also, as Regional Hospital and Moses Taylor integrate to become essentially the same facility, where there may even be bridges connecting each other, we don't know yet because they haven't announced all their plans, we'd like the contract at Moses to come up to where Regional is. It's about a 4% paid difference, a block away. If you're an RN at Moses Taylor, on average, you make 4% less than Regional. So that's been one of their concerns, is that when this integration happens and you could take, in the same building, walk across a bridge and get paid less, right? And so we think that that's absurd, and that the Tennessee, for 15 bargaining sessions, offered a 1% raise, they're up to 3% on average for the next three years. When that integration happens, we want to see real investment in our healthcare workers who live and patronize our city, who own homes in the city, and in our city has become the, one of the best middle-class jobs, not only a person can pursue, but a woman can pursue. And so we think of it as a great career for nurses and techs are going to be negotiating next. So please consider, and then at 7:00 PM in Courthouse Square, we'll have a candlelight vigil for patient care. There are patients who need extra nurses. And so we want to invite you to that. We'll lay a wreath at the John Mitchell statue, and you're welcome to give, as a more quiet culmination of our strike at the end of the day. It's a 24-hour strike. For Thursday, Friday, and maybe Saturday and Sunday, we're expecting Commonwealth Health to lock the nurses out of their jobs, and they're bringing in agency nurses. The hospital will be open during that time. But since the strike only lasts one day, our nurses would like to go back to work after one day. But to punish them, we're anticipating that Commonwealth Health will lock them out of their jobs and they'll lose a week's pay. Or if they're scheduled to work over those five days, they'll lose those days. And so we're, this is an employer that is now buying up our physicians and our EMTs, our companies, so we need, we need public officials to speak out, and I'd encourage you to join us there. If you have any questions, my phone number is on the flyer. It's Alex Latorre. You can call me if you'd like to schedule the time to be with us, to meet your nurses, and hopefully in a better situation than you would meet them if you were in the hospital for something bad. All right? All right, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry, do you have any motions or comments?
Mr. Rogan, I have no motions at this time, and all my comments are going to be held for the agenda items.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments?
Yes, I just have a couple of comments. I brought up before that we did receive a response from the administration regarding the garbage fee and extending the discount period. They asked us that we put it in legislation, so that will be on our agenda next week to extend the deadline to May 31st. I also got a couple complaints last week about the building on Hickory Street in South Webster that was recently destroyed by fire, and the structural integrity of that building. So I did, you know, reach out to Lips to see, you know, when this property, will this property be demoed, and if so, what is the status timeline for that demolition? And in regards to the Lace Works project, we did get a response from Linda Abley this week, the project, and I'm just going to read an email written from Mrs. Abley. "The project at Scranton Lace Works is moving along. The developer anticipates the demolition of the deteriorating buildings to begin on or about May 1st. As the demolition starts, they will simultaneously be beginning the land development process with their contracted civil engineering consultant. That process will take approximately four to six months for all approvals, and then they will immediately begin the site work and our overall development, including new construction and rehabilitation of the main historic buildings. The project is very complex and involves many moving parts to transform the entire area into a very special community. The developers are very anxious to get this project completed, for one of which is the high cost of carrying the project on until which time it can generate revenue. The developers indicated that they will be reaching out to the residents in the area in the coming weeks to keep them fully informed on what will be happening." And it just finishes, I hope this answers any questions the public and city council may have. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. Saturday, I attended the funeral service this past weekend by, for my cousin's husband, a good friend of mine and a good man. Richie Pika, the former fire chief for the city of Scranton, passed away last week. He loved to hunt and fish, he loved classic cars, he loved his family and friends, and he fiercely loved his city. Years ago, when Richie was the fire chief under Mayor Connors, I was on the planning commission, and when we crossed paths at family events, I always had spirited debates on the city politics and the role of government. I always looked forward to seeing Richie. He always had a big smile for his friends and family. The funeral procession was accompanied by engine 10 from East Mountain, and his pallbearers were all Scranton firefighters. The procession was intended for Elmhurst and Fairview Memorial Cemetery. But first, there was a slight detour as a long group of vehicles first drove downtown and passed by fire headquarters on Mulberry Street. The firefighters on duty that day stopped, stood at attention, and saluted their former chief as the hearse drove by, a fitting and touching tribute to their former leader. It is because of people like Richie Pika that this city will always survive. Like the city itself, he was good, strong, decent, and humble. I wish I had said it while he was alive, but I will say it now. Thank you, sir. On another front, not quite as, well, in a different vein totally, yesterday's guest editorial in the Scranton Times by attorney John McGovern titled "City Tax Fairness Talk Empty," was not only an attempt to mislead the public about city council's position on reassessment, but it is a failed and inaccurate attempt to link his Act 511 litigation to the issue of reassessment. Mr. McGovern states in reference to Act 511 case that the administration and city council publicly claimed that reassessment will solve the tax case. I am not aware of one member of this city council ever having made that claim. Another claim stated is that this city council takes advice from a financial consultant that is proposing a new payroll tax, and then goes on to say, "If reassessment is about fair and equitable tax structure, then what is the elimination or reduction of the city's wage tax, realty transfer tax, local services tax, amusement tax, business privilege mercantile tax, and parking tax?" Again, what Mr. McGovern conveniently fails to include in his inaccurate assessment of reassessment is the following. "The new payroll tax, which is spread among many more business sectors and is viewed by experts as fair and equitable, is both revenue neutral and only occurs with the simultaneous elimination of the business privilege and the mercantile tax, a tax we all have agreed is anything but fair and equitable." Additionally, he does not mention that this city council authored two reductions in the real estate transfer tax from 4.4% to 3.7%, and the parking tax that he mentioned is no longer in existence. He fails to mention that city council has requested that the administration hire an independent third party to review all fees from the top down, with the view to reduce, consolidate, and eliminate numerous nuisance fees. He also does not mention that this city council also authored a 10% discount in the refuse fee, saving taxpayers more of their hard-earned money and increasing cash flow to the city in a time of the year when real estate payments are limited. Mr. McGovern seems intent on bringing about a conclusion that ultimately could drive the city into bankruptcy, or at the very least dramatically increase property taxes beyond the reach of most of our citizens. While city's council, our intent is on bringing about solutions that avoid bankruptcy and creating a better climate for all to live and work in. I find it ironic that Mr. McGovern can claim indignation while fighting for his clients on Act 511 litigation, but he does not reserve the same outrage when Pennsylvania's constitution relative to tax uniformity is being violated, ignored, and trampled on by Tulacawana County commissioners. All the while, county and city property owners are left with a broken system of inequities and values that favors the rich and well-connected, and hurts the most vulnerable of property owners, our lower-income families and seniors. In the future, if Mr. McGovern has the urge to continue to litigate from the pages of the Scranton Times editorial page, I would simply encourage him to save it for the courts. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gohn. Any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you, just a few. First, I just want to say that in the last two years, the city has invested a quite large amount of money from CDBG funds into McLean Park, otherwise known as Rockwell Park over in North Scranton. And construction on the park started last week. So needless to say, the neighbors in that neighborhood are extremely pleased and excited about the developments. That park, for those of you who are not familiar, is in the heart of that neighborhood. And I am just glad that the city decided to invest in North Scranton and in that neighborhood. And I think that, you know, that park hasn't seen really any significant funding in the last 25 years. So again, I'm extremely pleased, and I can't wait to see what the finished product looks like. Second thing, we received a complaint about abandoned vehicles in the 1400 block of West Locust Street, and people parking in the alley Roundswood's place. So Mrs. Reed had sent a letter, or sent an email, rather, to the chief of police. And last thing I just want to mention, just to respond to Mrs. Schumacher's comment about the pension, just to be clear, Mr. Rogan has a seat on the pension board. Mrs. Reed is his proxy. So Mr. Rogan does not speak for any other member of council. He doesn't confer with us on the votes that he takes. That's his seat on the pension board. So I don't have a vote, Mr. Evans doesn't have a vote. That is solely Mr. Rogan's vote and responsibility, and also in his subcommittee is, I believe, the pension review. So just to make that extremely clear. And secondly, and what I didn't mention, I failed to mention earlier when I was commenting on the composite pension board meeting, and in response to what Mr. Foley said, it may be true, and I don't necessarily disagree with Mr. Foley, that, you know, maybe it really doesn't matter what percentage funding from the sewer sale goes into the pension funds, because the MMO is going to be high no matter what. Maybe the city can't afford that, and I know it can't afford it over the next few years. But the reality of the situation is, they're going to divvy up the funds $22.9 million from the sale to Sewer Authority. So I think it's important that it's done the right way, and it's my belief, and especially after reading the minutes from the composite pension board, that the vote was rushed, and that all of the analysis was not looked at before the vote was taken. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just to follow up on that, Councilman Donahue mentioned it earlier, and Councilman Gohn, and that's correct. It's the council president's seat on the board. I did direct my proxy to vote the way she did. I do disagree that the vote was rushed. This was actually something I've been in discussions with, with members from the pension board for months prior, so it's not something that was done in a last-minute meeting. And as I mentioned before, these allocations were actually published in the newspaper weeks prior to this meeting, and there weren't any objections to that allocation at that point in time. But as was mentioned, that is correct. I understand some of my colleagues disagree with that decision, and that's their right to their own opinion. Only one item, the rest I'll hold for agenda items. I did ask last week for an update on the Novembreno Pool Complex, and we did receive a letter from Linda Abley, and it says, "Chris Casciano, my staff forwarded me your email dated April 13th regarding the status of the Novembreno Pool. The final Novembreno Splash Park and Recreation Complex proposed construction plans were submitted on April 5th, 2018 through the landscape architect McLean and Associates to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for approval. This process generally takes four to six weeks, to be followed by reviews from the Lackawana County." Lackawana County Conservation District, Northeast Independent Consultants, followed by the HUD Environmental Review prepared by city planner Don King. The splash park equipment and specifications and costs for Recreation Resource USA through the CoStar Program have been submitted for purchase through the Department of Parks and Recreation. Only after the approvals are in place, the project will be ready to bid out. Following the legal review of the bids and the contractor selection, the demolition of the pools, site preparation, and construction will commence. Commencement and final completion of the project will be influenced by the fall-winter weather conditions, along with the practical timing of splash park equipment installation. This office will keep city council updated on this high-priority project as we move forward." So, I'd like to thank Linda Abley for getting back to us very quickly on this, and I do like seeing that it states that it's a high-priority project. As I've mentioned probably 100 times, as a kid, growing up in West Side, this is where everyone went. You went to the Novembreno Pool to swim, and it's heartbreaking driving by there every day, seeing it in its current condition. So, I do think that, you know, this will be a great addition to that neighborhood in West Side, and it's sorely needed. And that is all.
I just have one additional thing if I might, if I could add, Mr. Rogan. Just to clarify about the composite pension board meeting, and Mr. Rogan stated that, and it was in the newspaper about 45-45-10 split, but I just want to read a quick quote from one of the pension board's financial advisors, and, and I quote, and he says, "This is a template to begin looking at the process because nobody had anything to start talks about the allocation. He wants to be very specific with everybody that they aren't proposing that, he's not advocating a position on it. It was just to start a discussion at the board and city level because everyone has been asking about this to figure out how the funds are going to go in." He also says that he wants to be crystal clear that it was the start of a discussion and a model, it was not a proposal. So, I think that's where the difference is, that the city paid for another analysis, and I don't see in here where that was actually discussed about different funding levels. So, that's where I was confused at looking at this whole issue, that why would you only take a look at 45-45-10 and not look at the analysis that the city paid for? So, that's where the confusion comes in. Thank you.
I will just state, I looked at a number of, there was a number of different proposals. It wasn't just the 45-45-10 that was considered. There were other proposals. I felt that was the most fair. It certainly wasn't rushed, it was something that, weeks before the vote, you know, I felt that that was the right decision to make.
5B, no business at this time. Sixth order, 6A, reading by title. File of council number 13, 2018, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to enter into a lease agreement with West Scranton Little League Incorporated for use of city-owned property for a three-year period commencing April 15, 2018 and ending April 14, 2021.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A past reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
6B, reading by title, file of the council number 14, 2018, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to enter into a lease agreement with the Scranton School District for use of city-owned property as more fully described in the lease agreement attached here too, as Exhibit A, for a three-year period commencing April 15, 2018 and ending April 14, 2021.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6B past reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
6C, reading by title, file of the council number 15, 2018, an ordinance amending file of the council number 64, 2014, and an ordinance as amended entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting the Quality of Life and Violations Ticket Process in the City of Scranton. Be amended to include a new definition in Section 2: Definitions, New Violations; in Section 3: Quality of Life Violations; and New Fines and Penalties; in Section 9: Fines and Penalties."
You've heard reading by title of item 6C. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6C past reading by title.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I just want to thank Mr. Hinton from Licensing and Inspections for coming in and having a discussion on this agenda item in our caucus. The only thing that I would add to this is, and it was discussed in our caucus, I do think that there needs to be some sort of language in the quality-of-life ordinance that states that there should be a warning given by the inspector before they issue an actual fine. A lot of times, you know, maybe people aren't aware, they're new to the city, so I think we need to give them a chance. Mr. Hinton did explain that a lot of times they do give a warning, but it's at the discretion of the inspector. And I do think that we need to take that discretion away because we should give everybody a fair chance, no matter what it is. And as somebody mentioned in the caucus, it's not about collecting a fine, it's about enforcing, it's about cleaning up the city. So, the goal here is not to collect $100 off of somebody, it's to make sure that their property is clean and the neighborhood looks nice. So, hopefully within the next week, we can work on that amendment. I do think, Mr. Hinton also explained that if you're giving out a citation, it's required that they give a chance for somebody to clean it up before they issue a fine, but with a quality-of-life ticket, they don't necessarily have to do that. Thank you.
On the question, I would agree, I would agree with that. We all had a good conversation about that particular issue. Now, we have to sort of come up with the language that we all agree with. I think one of the things we would look at is, there's a warning, but it would probably be for first-time offenders only. I think repeat offenders don't necessarily need that, that courtesy, so, but we'll work it out between now and next week.
Yes, on the question, I agree with Councilman Evans and Gahn fully. I do thank Mr. Hinton for coming in and explaining this to us, but yes, the discretion of the warnings is the, that's where I have an issue with. Discretion is a slippery slope. Discretion is kind of, what mood are you in today? I believe that this should not be punitive. This should be something to, to make the neighborhoods better and to, to get everybody on the same page when it comes to our rules and regulations. Everybody deserves a fair shake. Somewhere in the legislation, I would like it to read that fines can be, fines will be given after a warning is given, and I would like that warning to be held on file, and I would like that warning to be signed. Whether it's 24 hours or 48 hours, they can come, the inspector can come back and actually issue that fine, you know, we can discuss that, but you know, I want somewhere where if they have to go back and they want to, they want to litigate this or mitigate this, you know, we have a signed warning saying, you know, you were presented with the issue, you were given a warning, you were given time, and it hasn't been taken care of. And then, and only then would I be so comfortable with some kind of punitive damage, because again, that's not what these regulations are about. It's just about getting everybody on the same page.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption. File of the council number 12, 2018, adopting the 2012 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, regulating and governing the conditions and maintenance of all property, buildings, and structures by providing the standards for supplied utilities and facilities and other physical things and conditions essential to ensure that structures are safe, sanitary, and fit for occupation and use, the condemnation of buildings and structures unfit for human occupancy and use, and the demolition of such existing structures in the city of Scranton, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees therefore, repealing Section 1 of Ordinance Number 37, 2014 of the city of Scranton and all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption. Resolution Number 35, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application by the city of Scranton Police Department, and if successful, a grant agreement and accept the funds related thereto from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Justice Assistance Grant Program in the amount of $150,000.
What is the recommendation for the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
For the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage on item 7B.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I just want to echo what Mr. Gahn said last week about Chief Rousiyan on the Police Department. They, they utilize the JAG program to the best of their ability, and we get lots of funding for, for a lot of, a lot of tools that, that they get, our officers get to use for training and then also on the field. And this is one example, and there's many more, you know, there are always applications out, and there's more coming. You know, they just do a great job. I just want to commend them. Thank you.
And just to reiterate what was mentioned by my colleagues, this is an excellent program, and the Police Department really does do a great job of obtaining grants. I do want to mention, there is another vote coming up regarding the Sorenti Center, and this program would actually, this training program would actually take place at that center. So, I hope everyone that votes for this ordinance would be voting for the other one. Roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption. Resolution Number 36, 2018, accepting the recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board and approving the Certificate of Appropriateness for Michael Crawford Multiscape Incorporated, 995 South Township Boulevard, Pittston, PA 18640, and Highland Associates, 102 Highland Avenue, Clark Summit, PA 18411, for repair of mortar joints, cutting and pointing to sections of the exterior facade at Vine Street, Dix Court, Mulberry Street, and North Washington Avenue sides situated at the Scranton Cultural Center, 420 North Washington Avenue, Scranton, PA 18503.
What is the recommendation for the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second. On the question, roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, previously tabled, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption. Resolution Number 30, 2018, authorizing the director of the Department of Public Works of the city of Scranton to sign and submit the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation application for traffic signal approval for traffic signal permit number 40115 to upgrade traffic signal at 7th Avenue and West Linden Street.
What is the recommendation for the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I'm going to be voting for this. I know it's been in the newspaper and talked about quite extensively in the public and at these council meetings, because this is related to Sheets. Just want to make it clear, as I did in the caucus a week ago, that we're not voting on the Sheets project, we're voting on upgrading the traffic signal. So, voting against this really wouldn't make much sense, in my opinion, because the alternative would not be to upgrade the traffic signal, and it has to be done anyways. On the Sheets project, however, I am in favor of it. You know, there was an initial concern, and we wanted more information about the traffic setup, because that is a heavily traveled area in the morning, especially during school. But I think that new business and competition is a good thing for the city. I mean, we should be doing everything in our power to do whatever it takes to get new businesses in the city of Scranton, especially with the economic climate that we find ourselves in. The argument that other gas stations or other, you know, companies might be affected by this, in my opinion, is a little ridiculous and disingenuous, because let's just use the example of a Trader Joe's. Everybody talks about Trader Joe's. If they wanted to move into the city of Scranton, Gertie's I'm sure wouldn't like that because they're a supermarket too. Would we be against that because Gertie's was against it, or because it would affect other businesses or invite more competition? I just, I don't see that argument. The other argument that's been made about alcohol sales, somebody said a week or two ago, and this is true, there's a bar right across the street from Memorial Stadium. So, I think you can shoot down that argument as well. So, again, I just wanted to comment on the Sheets project overall. I think it's going to be a good thing for the city. We should be promoting business and competition wherever and whenever we can, but for these two pieces that we're going to vote on, we're voting on upgrading the traffic signal, we're not voting on the Sheets project. Thank you.
Yes, on the question, yeah, yeah, Mr. Gahn is right. The black and white of this legislation is the traffic signal and how we're going to make sure that their safety and the flow of traffic is fit for that business on that, on that corner. It's zoned properly, and it has to go through the whole city planner and engineer division, but the only thing the city council is going to be voting on tonight is the traffic signal and the pattern of the flow of the traffic. That is it. So, based on that, and based on discussions we've had with the city planner, the city engineer, I feel confident that the black and white of this legislation will be satisfied by the measures they're going to take for this project. So, based on that, I'm going to be voting yes.
My colleagues are correct that we are only voting on traffic. We're not voting on whether you want Sheets to come to Scranton or you don't. I struggled with this quite a bit because I do want to see new businesses come into the city of Scranton at all costs. I do not think this is the right location. I think there should be a Sheets in Scranton, but not at this location because of the traffic issues specifically at North Main Avenue, where, as our city engineer mentioned, it is an older streetlight, and I may be biased because I travel this route literally twice every day, and I see the traffic that's there currently. I do think there will be traffic issues with this project in this location. That's not to say I'm against the Sheets coming to Scranton. I certainly would support this project just in a different location.
On the question, as, as has been stated, our role and focus on this legislation is purely in how it pertains to traffic synchronization and safety for vehicular and pedestrian traffic. So, the public caucus last week, we rallied associates, the city engineer, and the city planner, have led me to firmly believe that the design is both comprehensive and appropriate. This is really not a debate on, you know, small business versus large business, but I will say for the record, no one has been more pro-business or pro-small business than this councilman, but I will continue to advocate for that. Small business community work towards removing any and all impediments that will make Scranton once again the friendly city for all, including the business community. So, I am supportive of this application, I'm supportive of what we're doing tonight. What we did previously with the caucus was simply a routine matter of bringing the engineer in, having him discuss what was happening with the traffic. I know it turned into something a little more than that, that we all didn't expect that to happen, but I guess it was a good debate, so we're here to vote tonight.
Anyone else? Roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
No. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E, previously tabled, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption. Resolution Number 31, 2018, authorizing the director of the Department of Public Works of the city of Scranton to sign and submit the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation application for traffic signal approval for traffic signal permit number 40308 to upgrade traffic signal at West Linden Street and North 8th Avenue, Mount Pleasant Drive.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second. On the question, roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
No. I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F, previously tabled, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption. Resolution Number 32, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Peters Design Group Incorporated for professional architectural and engineering services for the Sorenti Memorial Army Reserve Center renovation project.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I'm sure that Peters Design Group will do a fantastic job. I'm not, certainly not questioning the company or the work that they do. My one major concern and the reason that I'll be voting against this is, in the fee schedule, Peters Design Group has stated that there will be a negotiated price for construction monitoring, so that would be a separate price and a separate percentage of the overall contract and the final cost of the project. It's just my concern that the sky could be the limit there. If it was going to be a negotiated price for construction monitoring, it should have been set in the contract. It should not be open for interpretation, because we could be opening ourselves up to higher costs. Also, just as an aside, bidders were not allowed to see a proposed budget, or at least an estimate of a budget. They were also not allowed to tour the entire facility, including the inside of the facility. This is highly unusual, in my opinion, and I'm not sure why, why that was part, why it wasn't part of the RFQ. So, I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Yes, on the, on the question, I will also be voting against this. I have the same reservations Mr. Gohan has, and I just believe it's way too open-ended. And although this money will be coming from grant funding, I believe it's our responsibility to spend that responsibly. Thank you.
On the question, I first like to thank Councilman Gohan for asking some important questions about this contract, but I am comfortable with the answers provided by attorney Escra, the city solicitor, and will be voting yes on this legislation. I feel that because of the cost of the contract is limited, because of the grant requirements and the chance for cost order, change orders or cost overruns, in my mind are, are limited. I would expect that the police department and the business administrator, whoever that may be in the future, would also protect our taxpayers by making sure costs are contained.
And I believe the cost is limited to a percentage of the total cost of the project, so that would put a cap on it. Anyone else?
Yes, on the question, I also had some questions on this project, I believe it was, it was tabled and, and for good reason. My question was answered, it was, is this project still on the books for grant funding? And the answer was yes. The agreement was when we wanted to allocate this building and use it to hold our expensive police equipment, was that they're not going to overspend their budget. They're going to get grants, use grant money to improve the project, and I just wanted to make sure we weren't going out of those bounds and spending money from the general fund at, and, you know, getting lost. And I was assured, no, it's still a grant-supplemented project, and I also want to stay on the record as that I'm still on board with getting rid of, of our Ash Street locations and using that to further supplement the project as it goes forward.
Roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gohan?
No.
And Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.